February thirteenth, twenty twenty five, city council meeting. Uh, Debbie, could you please call roll?
Hold wire.
Here.
Karen Riedenstein?
Here.
Ken the Baldridge?
Here.
Todd Henstrom?
Here.
Matt Louie?
Here.
All right, looks like we have a format. Everyone, please stand for the pledge, and after the pledge, please stay standing for prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly fathers, we gather this evening for our city council meeting. We humbly ask that you give us discernment and wisdom in our discussions and our decisions. Father, help us to be good stewards of our resources. Father, we also want to pray for those that serve our city. Lord, I pray for our city workers, our public works department, our police department, that you would watch over them and protect them. Father, also protect our community, protect our residents. Father, since we last met, uh, we want to pray for the families that were impacted uh, by the plane crash uh, from Wichita to Washington. Father, several from our community have been impacted by this, so we pray for their comfort, and we just pray for your blessings and encouragement during this time of loss. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. Move on to approving tonight's agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's agenda? Uh, Matt, uh, how long do you think for executive session? I'm thinking, what? Fifteen, twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes? Okay, twenty minutes for the non-elected personnel executive session. Any other questions, council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
And we approve the agenda as written with an executive session of twenty minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Todd, a second by Karen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie's five oh. Moving on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. I have a motion by Matt, second by Karen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Move on to the communications section, civic groups and committees. Any civic groups or committees here to speak this evening? Seeing none, move on to Kichai Good News. Council, any Kichai good news they would like to share? Um, I have two. I want to congratulate Old School Tap House for celebrating four years open here in the community. So congratulations to them. And also congratulations to Bloomerang. Um, I, since I've last typed this, they're actually gonna appear five times this month for Valentine's Day. So they're doing a segment, and they're gonna be on three times today. They did a segment last week, I believe, and one, um, I think tomorrow. Uh, on cake news. Cake news, yes. Uh, so congratulations to them. Um, and go buy your flowers. Valentine's Day is tomorrow, tomorrow. Gentlemen, ladies, everybody, everybody deserves a Valentine. So that's my Kichai good news. Any other Kichai good news I haven't highlighted, staff? All right, moving on to public comment. Debbie?
Debbie.
Debbie?
I just have some comments that I would like to share. One of them would be regarding the police department, because I figured, or I thought, we originally had them buy the pickup truck to haul things around. So then why now are they purchasing a trailer? Which is it? You know, if we don't need both, then why are we paying for both? And then on the NRP, why did you grant the extremely generous change in the sliding scale tax abatement for the business owner last week? The business owner didn't even show up in person so you could ask questions. We did not get to hear from the business owner, and you couldn't even ask questions. Why did you, why did you, why didn't you table the request until the business owner made a personal appearance before the council and the public to respond to questions? If the business owner wanted a different scale of the NRP, you would think they would be able to attend the meeting so you could ask questions. By the time this request was presented, the public comments had been closed. It doesn't seem appropriate for new business information to be, to be presented after the public hearing is closed. Why did you include the Jeff Engler, the property Jeff Engler is developing in the NRP? When this was all being presented, he even stated he did not want any type of tax relief or tax abatements. But yet you included his property in the NRP. I've heard people say, well, he can then charge less for per square foot for his future businesses that are moving in there. He is under no obligation to do that to those businesses. But yet he said he was not interested, but yet you guys included the property in the NRP. And Paul, I believe it was Paul who asked last meeting, if the NRP was costing the city money in the sense of is the city giving money to the people in the NRP? And I believe Matt's response was, no. That technically is correct, but it's not fully correct. Because I would like to disagree with that statement. You are correct that you are not giving that, those that participate money for the NRP, but you are giving money up because you gave up the opportunity to collect additional taxes. How will the city council balance their tax abatement and tax rebate decisions and provide tax relief for residents and current business owners for the upcoming business sessions? And then Karen last week gave us kind of a breakdown of how, what makes up all of the taxes and, um, her house, which was very interesting and very informative, and I appreciated that. I believe she said one mil increase would be thirty-two dollars more in taxes. And I know you all think thirty-two dollars, that's no big deal. But I'm telling you, if you were out for a walk and there was thirty-two dollars on the ground, you wouldn't step over it, you'd pick it up. Thirty-two dollars matters to everybody, to, to our money, the residents.
Thank you. We will close public comment. Moving on to new business, uh, Kichai Financial Analysis Presentation. And I want to apologize because I am sucking on a cock drop because I'm getting over a cold after two weeks, so I'm not just eating candy, I swear.
Mayor and council, earlier this year, uh, we engaged Wichita State, the Kansas Public Finance Center at Wichita State to do a financial study analysis for the city. And Dr. David Gao, who is the head of that department, is here tonight to give the presentation on his findings.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, mayor and council members. I'm very happy to be here to, um, present the results. So, um, thank you, uh, Matt, for the introduction. So I joined People's Law School about two and a half years ago. Uh, so my research specialty is in the state and local budgeting, finance, and financial management. And one of the reasons I was attracted to this area, to People's Law School, is when I was interviewed here, I see how closely kind of, uh, you know, the community supports the school and the school is reaching out. There's a lot of collaboration going on, that's the thing I really enjoy. So, uh, after I got here, um, I kind of start to reach out to the local government to see, since I'm here, is there anything I can help, right? Those kind of conversation. Um, I think I should mention this, I'm also wearing another hat. I'm currently the council member of City of Maine as well, so I know the feeling. At that place, but, uh, today I'm using the, the hat of the regional professor of public finance at Wichita State University to present this. So, uh, very briefly, uh, the team is me and also the student. That's another thing about this, is really whenever the project, I try to get the students involved. Uh, this is a really good opportunity for them. And, uh, I would say probably we, uh, in the public sector, local government do have, uh, some kind of a crisis is in terms of, um, retaining good employees. Particularly, because that's kind of my concern, is really in the public finance. So I, I think it's, uh, you know, based this kind of local, uh, project and helping the students, students also having me to put things together, it's a very good opportunity for them as well, so thank you again. Um, so data collection, as you, we just start with your budget document, your, um, auditive financial statement and, uh, city audience. Um, it's a typical, it's a very typical kind of financial condition or fiscal condition analysis will include three parts. The first, we start to look at the social economic characteristics, looking at your current situation, you're trying to identify anything that, uh, we need to pay attention to. And also, um, I just noticed you, you, I think Kichai used to have a revenue menu that kind of stopped for, for a while. And this is kind of perfect place to have a revenue menu, uh, that are kind of, you know, looking at different string of your revenue, looking at their, you know, statutory requirement, what is the exemption, how it is used, is there any kind of historical, uh, event happen? And also, um, kind of give a projection of next five years. So that's kind of useful for, um, here to thinking about, uh, thinking ahead when you design out now is the budget decision, right? So that's, uh, that's, uh, important information. Well, I kind of concentrate on the financial condition, uh, analysis. And also, I think through the conversation with Matt, it's not only kind of looking at how currently Kichai is financially and also compare with other municipalities in the area, but also want to find a way to better present information. You know, nowadays is a lot of, you know, dashboard visualization that really helps. So towards the end, I'll show you some visualizations I made out of those analyses. So the fiscal condition analysis, uh, start with the overview of, uh, your total revenue, total expenditure, and then goes into general fund, and then business fund, and last but not least, is your debt condition, okay? Um, so, I will not, because you see the report, I think it's kind of eight, eight pages. I'll, I'll go through cover to cover, right? So some highlight of the findings, right? So the first one is in the social economic characteristics part. Uh, I do notice two things, one is the aging population. Uh, so the proportion of residents age sixty-five, that, uh, that proportion kind of increased. Um, I would say pretty dramatically. Uh, I'll show you the graph, and, and I always go through those highlights first, and then I'll show you the, the, uh, the graphs. Housing, uh, you do see a rise in the renter occupied units in terms of proportion. So you'll see the, uh, the charts of that. And then look at your, um, revenue structure. Uh, I mean, I would say it's not that heavily dependent on the profit tax because you do have your, uh, lo- local auction sales tax, that's how I call that, right? Um, you know, we, we usually just call that loss. Uh, so those two combined will be taking, uh, over seventy percent of your revenue. Um, so that's the, um, that's one thing is, but, but since you adopt the sales tax, uh, it is good that you kind of diversify your revenue stream. Uh, but I always keep, uh, one thing in mind is sales tax is more volatile than profit tax. Uh, you may say, and you may see especially the first year, I think this is kind of the first you have the lack of collection, you have the sentiment is actually, oh, we get more than we expected. Right, I think that's the, that's the correct statement. Um, uh, I just want to place a warning here. Uh, it's like, uh, this stream of revenue, we do see the trend slowing down. And, uh, but given nowadays, you know, the federal chaotic, you know, everything, anything can happen, but still general trend will slow down. And also because you kind of, you have this expectation, now you have a new expectation, so you cannot always thinking about that would keep growing. It's really fluctuated, because, uh, if you look at the state, it's the, the same thing. So I'm also on the, um, possessive revenue focusing group of the state government, so I will keep an eye on that as well. So in general, uh, always the recommendation from the local government is try to diversify your revenue stream. I mean, this is good, but, uh, still I just want to uh, stress here, you have that new stream, but you also have the county one percent. It's county-wide. Uh, but my recommendation will be you keep a separate, uh, budget item for your own city, uh, sales tax, so that you can keep track of that, and you can know how much exactly you get on that stream and how you spend money off of that part. Uh, and then is your, uh, per capita revenue, uh, general fund expenditure, I do see those kind of, you know, revenue expenditure go hand in hand, even though you compare with other municipalities relative, it's okay, it's not that high, but you do have a kind of a rising, uh, trend there. I mean, there's, because there's some, uh, demand there, that's understandable, but that's another thing you want to, uh, keep an eye on that. General fund balance, so, um, in general, you maintain a very good, healthy, uh, general fund, uh, balance. Um, local government and this size tend to have, uh, that amount of, uh, fund balance. That's quite normal. Um, but one thing I noticed is that in your twenty twenty-three, your general fund expenditure exceed, you know, general fund revenue. Uh, I don't know, is that because kind of the over-optimistic of the sales tax or kind of, you know, so that's the thing I said, you know, from now on, you really need to, um, be careful there because even though we build up the, the reserve, uh, but you also need to keep in mind the, we call that structural balance. Actually, we, I just had a GVOA committee, meeting today. We're really talking about all those best practice. One of the things is, uh, structural, structural balance. So in a very simple term, structural balance is your recurring revenue should not, uh, be lower than your recurring expenditure. So that's, that's kind of the number one golden rule for structural balance. Um, utility fund, um, I do find that your water and sewer utility fund may have some challenge, right? Uh, I'll show the graph, even though you have the reserve, but I think that's, that's kind of the, through all the analysis, that's one thing catch my eye. Um, I may suggest one thing is probably, I don't know what is, when was the last time you have a re-study? Probably it's a time to have a re-study. Or you also need to look at the fund and to see it's really, is that a perfect alignment in terms of, is there any kind of inter-fund transfer? Is that necessary? Don't get me wrong, it's, it's, it's not saying that you cannot have that, but you need to say, okay, if you allocate certain time of Matt to that, is that reasonable? You know, that, all I'm saying is that it's time to take a look, okay? Um, your debt looks good, you'll have a relatively low debt burden, so which means you do have the room that if you're thinking about infrastructure expending and catch up those maintenance, that's your opportunity here. Uh, another thing I find interesting is, um, the way you, um, in the auditive financial statement, the way to report inter-fund transfers. I do find that twenty twenty-three, to my opinion, is, is a good way to present it. I think that you should keep that on, will make my analysis even easier. I'll just show you that graph, and you'll know what I mean. So, yeah, uh, again, I just kind of give you, that's kind of the overview of those things, but I'll, um, supplement by those, uh, graphs. But this is what I mean by your aging population thing. Um, another thing about your population here, I talked with Matt, I don't know whether this is universally true in this area, that, um, twenty twenty because that's kind of the census year. So twenty twenty, your, um, population reported is a little bit over twenty-two hundred. Um, but I, from other sources, uh, you can see, you know, nineteen and even twenty-one, twenty-two, it's all above that. Uh, so I don't know whether it's the census didn't pick up the right information or other, uh, if there's anything, you know, there's a kind of mismatch there. But anyway, so that's kind of, you know, your median age over years is kind of okay, it's kind of relatively around forty-ish, right? But the percentage of population over sixty-five, you can see twenty twenty-two is already seventeen point six percent. So again, uh, uh, because given the population numbers of different sources, uh, this one is, I kind of suggest you, because when you do the community survey, that you will be, that would be a good opportunity to catch is really that type of demand crisis. So, I mean, I, I always want to do is not just rely on one source, but you know, multiple things that you can, you know, check maybe. So that's the, uh, aging population thing. The housing, the reason I said, uh, housing is your, uh, renter occupied. You can see from this graph, um, since twenty twenty-two, uh, it's increasing. Uh, so we, we talk about this, uh, you know, thinking about, uh, it's really your demographic composition and also the housing need here. Uh, that's kind of the issue we want to pay attention to, thinking about how to address that. And Matt talked about some kind of transitional, uh, housing scenario, because here, uh, the reality is we always have this, uh, affordable housing issue. And there, it's actually a lot of things that they are interconnected. And we talked about home maintenance, but don't forget it's also related to the housing costs. So that's, that's another thing. Uh, so this is the dr- uh, general fund revenue compensation. I give you a comparison between twenty twenty-two and the twenty twenty-three. So you can see, um, this big chunk that, uh, forty-eight percent in twenty twenty-two and, uh, forty-five percent in twenty twenty-three, that's property tax. Uh, the twenty-five, yeah, I think those two, twenty-five point one, twenty-four point five is the sales tax, okay? So let's give you the different, um, scenario. So this is the general fund revenue expenditure trend, uh, re- uh, general, uh, general fund revenue and expenditure. So this is where I'm talking about, noticing twenty twenty-three, the green line is above the blue line, which means your expenditure, general fund expenditure exceeds your general fund, uh, fund, uh, revenue. Um, so again, this is one is, uh, you compare with other cities of the, I forgot to mention, so we picked up their air, Park City, uh, Maine, Valley Center, and Saville, uh, to make the comparison. I think initially we include Clearwater, given it's kind of similar population size, but unfortunately, I think if students said initially they can have the data, but later on they cannot have the, um, access to the data. Uh, so that's why it is dropped. So, um, so this, this will be one of the visualization I show later on, that you can, um, have, uh, the ability to have, uh, to interact with the web to, to make those, um, comparisons. So this is the fund balance. Um, again, you can compare with other cities. And, uh, you can see, you know, it's because of your general fund expenditure exceeds your revenue, so you can see that fund balance kind of dropped in twenty twenty-three. Is the, the number, the, the beauty of the numbers, you can always find trace in multiple sources. It's never hide in one place. So this is why I said your water fu- utility fund has the trouble. Uh, since twenty twenty, you received, uh, you know, you always have kind of that, we call that deficit situation. That's all you write. Even though you have the reserve, uh, this is why I say, I didn't see this kind of thing in your gas, uh, utility fund. Uh, I know that, uh, you may have, get some lesson from twenty twenty-one, because that was a high there. Uh, so you kind of try to build up the reserve, you pay attention to that. Uh, but water is also important, so that's the, that's the area. Uh, so that, um, that is a kind of a tricky part in terms of how you compare with others, right? Um, we do have a statutory limit here, uh, that your GOBOM cannot exceed, uh, thirty percent of your assessed value, but there's a certain exceptions. And so going through the financial statement, uh, I think it's, it's very hard for me to identify all those auditives, which part is exactly, unless I can talk to their, um, financial advisor or the bond counselors, right? But overall, you can still get a sense is in terms of debt service, right? And our principal interest, and, uh, what is the percentage of that in your total expenditure and, uh, total revenue, right? And also, I say, because the debt service is also how you structured that, right? And also, the, another thing is your interest payment. Um, because the, the more you pay your interest, it gives you less ability to allocate onto other activities. Is, um, I would, you know, for the interest payment, you can just look at our federal government then. You can notice how, how much that portion is, is, um, is in the budget, right? So this is what I'm talking about, the inter-fund transfer reporting on the left side. It's, you can see that's the twenty twenty-two. The twenty twenty-two I can only see is, uh, you have transfer in, transfer out. Twenty twenty-three, the good thing is I can see general fund transfer out to each other fund. So that's why I said twenty twenty-three is much better than twenty twenty-two and prior. But I hope that you can keep this practice, that would be very awesome. Um, visualization, the very first thing is, uh, citizens are very care, uh, very concerned about their neoliberalism. Kichai has a, a little complicated situation, because you do have different, uh, school district, different punctures. So it's actually give you three scenarios, so that. And then this one is good, kind of like in the shape of a house, I actually borrowed it from Maine's. It's basically that, but it would divide into two different layers. You will know which portion is from the city, which portion is the school district, which portion is the county, which portion is the, is the fire district. I notice this sometimes, not many of some would get confused, you know, depending on where they live, depending on how many tax units they are facing. Uh, I plan to talk to my wife about this as well. She said, you know, how come we have this, uh, five tax bill compared to my daughter's friend's house? So I think it explains it fair as well. Uh, so this is the, this is the visualization part. I use Tableau to give you the dashboard, right? So this is just a snapshot. The good thing is, once you click that, then give you this link, and later on you can embed this link to your website. So allows you to here, say, because here you just see twenty twenty-three, then you say, okay, how about twenty twenty-two? And you can just check that, and you can see both twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. And you say, oh, okay, I just don't want to get confused, I want to only take a look at twenty twenty-two. And you can see that. And then here you can see assessed value comparison among all those cities I mentioned. But let's say, okay, I don't care about others, let me just compare various areas Kichai, what would happen? So this will give you a kind of nice tool for the council, but also for the citizen to, uh, kind of interact, because we call that interactive dashboard. So this one is right, because it's right after that neoliberal thing, so it's kind of compared neoliberal and assessed value. Okay? See, move to the next one. The next one is the Kichai's fiscal structure of twenty twenty-three, right? You can, the same, same logic, uh, once you get, uh, because I just embedded in the PowerPoint. So it's, it's the same thing, the first two, I divided, you look at your everything, right? So the revenue by funds, expenditure by funds. And then you'll say, okay, how about in general fund? What are those compositions of the tax revenues and the expenditures in, in the, in the general fund? In the different fund, because here I choose the general fund, and you can see this. Let's say if I change this, check this out, that disappear, but you check business, and you see the different composition. So this is a, a, a way to look at, this is a snapshot of your twenty twenty-three fiscal structure. The next one. The next one will be the general fund revenue compensation. It's kind of basically follow the, the logic in the report, start with the overall and general fund. Uh, then it's, I, I didn't include the business on visualization, but then you move to the debt. So same thing, you, uh, get here, and then you can, uh, you can choose the year, different year, and make the comparison, and you can see how the composition change over year. Um, and then you can see also the trend. I just include property tax, local sales tax, labor tax in total in this scenario. So same thing with the, I, I will not show you the visualization, they can have the link, you, you can play around. So it kind of give you the sense how we come up with those things. So it kind of give you the sense how we come up with those things. So this is the general fund expenditure, uh, the same thing, you can choose different years and then look at different categories. Um, here is the general fund comparison, which again allows you to, if you want to look at all the cities you compare with, you can do that. Or you can pick two or three to do the comparison. So that, um, so that I choose several indicators, you can have the geo that, uh, inch, uh, as the percentage of the assessed value, total that, and then geo that per capita and the total that per capita do the interest payment as well. So that's the, all the visualizations you can have. Uh, so the question is always, what is next, right? Um, in our, you know, this, um, since I got here, I have the salary county to analysis called the revenue per acre. It's basically linking the fiscal analysis to land use. Uh, that's kind of the core, uh, concept of that. Because we are kind of used to think about, because you see my previous presentation always talk about revenue per capita and expenditure per capita. But here it's kind of changing the lens from revenue per capita or expenditure per, per capita to revenue per acre. Revenue per, uh, or expenditure, uh, per acre. So that kind of give you the sense of how efficient you use that map. Um, this is kind of, let's say, it's an alternative way to, while you're thinking about how, what is your development pattern? You need to take into consideration of fiscal impact. Because you can see each parcel, how much, uh, property tax you can generate. If there's a, uh, uh, kind of commercial, you can see the sales tax. But don't forget that that's the revenue side, but also there's a expenditure attached to that. And, uh, expenditure is not just a one time shot, you also need to look at in the future. Because you do have, depending on, uh, depending on how new or how aged that infrastructure, year by year, the maintenance cost may increase, right? At certain years, you need to have the reconstruction. It's your current way of developing is in the, we call that sustainable, sustainable way, right? Fiscal is a sustainable way. So that's, that's have the thing, um, I'm thinking it's good, not only for Kichai, in my opinion, it's for the whole county, all the cities here. We need to consider that while we, um, thinking about, uh, our development pattern. To give you a, a sense of that, not the final, but basically how the visual will look like. Uh, so, um, even though you may feel this type of analysis a little bit biased towards the dense development. Uh, but the thing is, we, we can always thinking about a balanced way. As you will never say, okay, you always have the dense, but you, you can, but this is my, my way of this, you need to take a balanced view. Uh, you want to have something of mixed use, you want to have the single family house, you also want to have some kind of dense area to compensate that. So you, you do need to have some low density, some high density, but then you need to understand there's a cross subject going on here. So, um, I said, that's kind of a balanced view of that. Um, you know, that's, that's, that's all. I think if you guys want to pursue this, I'm more than happy to help. Thank you, thank you all. I think this, I got this one, just from their website.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's our very nice part.
Any questions?
Uh, council, any questions? Not any input you want to?
No, I would just, I would thank Dr. Gao, we have met many times and discussed this stuff very in depth. I think the report that he came out with is, provides us with a good roadmap going forward. It's going to help us tremendously in our budgeting process this year, next year, uh, through the next five years. And we will continue to update this plan. I will say, Dr. Gao is involved in a lot of our professional organizations and, uh, really has some intriguing thought processes on how cities grow, uh, specifically with the land use, um, and the planning. So that will be very important for us as well as we define where Kichai is going to grow and what's going to be best for the city. So I know it's a lot of information. All this information was provided to you, it will be published on the website, uh, for the citizens to look at. And as well as the graphic part of it, tab, tableau.
Tableau, yeah, tableau, I give you the name, that you can embed in your, your website.
Yeah, will be provided to us, so we can put that on our website. So council, citizens, even staff can get on there and we can manipulate that data to see how we compare to past years.
Not manipulate.
Later on. Yeah, we can't change the data, we can.
Yes, visuals change, not the numbers.
Good point, thank you. So, um, but yes, if council has any questions for David, if you have any questions that you think about as you review the information, get it to me. I will email him and get an answer from him. So we really appreciate the work that you did. It's valuable information for the city and it's really going to help us plan and grow.
This looks like a really, really good visibility that we've been, been missing. I was going to ask Matt, what, what are the next steps? Is it just kind of digest this and then have a plan for rolling out that, that information?
So, yes, digest this information. We as staff, as council, will use this information in our budget planning for next year. Uh, a lot of this information is going to come into play with rate studies. As you can see, um, our water especially, we need to make some rate changes there, but we want to be responsible in how we do those. So this information will play into that as well, or future presentations and discussion by the council and with the community on those. Um, and then incorporating these other parts, a lot of what David does, um, goes hand in hand with what P E C is doing for us. With our comp plans and, um, and all these other, well, specifically the, the comp plan.
Right, yeah.
A lot of the planning, so really goes hand in hand with, with the, that stuff. So incorporating his development or what's this program called here that you did for Cedric County?
Well, we call that, uh, because the first step is the revenue per acre, but now it's actually the second phase incorporating the expenditure. I would say the impact of land use to the fiscal, or the fiscal impact of land use.
Right.
Yeah.
And what he means there is as we grow, as residential develops, making sure that that development continues to support the infrastructure needs, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, those maintenance needs. So we're not just throwing up developments and then putting the cost on the back of somebody else twenty years down the road or not putting any money into it and have a system that fails so we can function as a city and, um, you know, take care of the infrastructure that we put in. So, does that answer your question, Tom?
Other questions, council?
Seeing that, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to CU twenty twenty four zero seven accessory dwelling. I call item A B, uh, a consideration of case number CU twenty twenty four dash zero seven, a request to allow an accessory dwelling on the property in A one agricultural district, zoning district. Before we proceed, would any member of the city council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item? Seeing none, let the record show that there is no exception and that a quorum of five council members is present. A reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of twenty percent or more of the property being rezoned or twenty percent or more of the property within the official notification area. Has the city clerk determined a valid protest for this case? Yes. Okay. Council members should report the general nature of, uh, any verbal or written ex parte, uh, ex parte communication received prior to the meeting. However, it is not necessary to disclose, disclose the names of the parties. Does any, any member of council wish to report ex parte communication? Seeing none, let the record show that there is no ex parte communication having been reported. I apologize, I'm going to go back to the protest section, sorry, Andrew.
Yeah.
Do you, do I need to reread that section?
You mean notice, not protest, right? Never mind.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So there, there was a protest, correct? There was no valid protest, okay? That's what I thought and I wanted to make sure, okay? Public hearing, the planning commission held a public hearing on the, this case one fourteen twenty twenty four. As the council received a summary of the public hearing found in the unapproved meeting minutes. Does the council and everyone present on the case believe the public hearing was fair and impartial?
Yes.
I will now call on zoning administrator Justin Belt to present the case report, background information and the planning commission's recommendation. Jessica, go ahead.
All right, uh, CU twenty twenty four dash zero seven, Ashley Bauer. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to build an accessory dwelling. The property is generally located six hundred and forty feet south of ninety eighth street north on the west side of hydraulic or ninety seven thirty seven north hydraulic and is zoned A one agricultural use. The property is unplatted and developed with a single family residence and an oversized detached garage. The applicant was to rebuild the accessory dwelling to allow her parents to live on the property with her. Accessory dwelling is defined in the Kichai zoning regs as an accessory residential unit that is detached from the primary structure on a parcel. Five point four of the zoning regulations state accessory apartment or dwelling, a residential unit that is accessory to a single family residential primary use on the same lot. An accessory apartment is constructed inside or attached to the primary structure or a secondary structure. An accessory dwelling exists independently and is detached from all other structures. Specific use standards of the Kichai zoning regs of section ten point three seven state shall be limited to one such structure per lot and allowed only in conjunction with detached, single family residential primary structures. Shall be compatible with the immediate neighborhood and constructed with the same or equal sitting exterior materials as the principal structure. Uh, shall be limited in size to fifty percent of the principal structure's gross floor area. Shall be subject to applicable lot, lot coverage setback and off-street parking requirements. Accessory apartments or dwellings may be rented as an independent residential unit. Two, shall be maintained under the same ownership as the principal structure and shall not be subdivided as an individual lot or condominium unit. A deed restriction stating such shall be filed with the Cedric County Register of Deeds prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Guest homes and pool houses does not apply to this one. Accessory dwellings are allowed in A one agricultural district by approved conditional use only. For case history, the property has not been platted and there have been no zoning actions on the property. Conformance, uh, to plans and policies, the requested conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. A goal of the plan is to provide quality and context sensitive aesthetics in development and redevelopment. Proposed design will be, uh, required by the, will be required by the specific use standards to have exterior sighting of a color and visual appearance similar to the principal structure. This will help ensure that the accessory dwelling has context sensitive aesthetics. Recommendation, based upon information prior to public hearing, planning staff recommends that the request be approved with the following conditions. One, the accessory dwelling shall be maintained of the same ownership as the principal structure and shall not be subdivided as an individual lot or condominium unit. A deed restriction stating such shall be filed with the Cedric County Register of Deeds prior to the issuance of the C O. Two, the accessory dwelling must comply with specific use standards of ten point three seven. Three, only one family may live in the accessory dwelling at a time. Four, if the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. Recommendation is based upon the following findings. One, all surrounding properties northeast, south and west of the subject property are zoned A one agricultural district and developed with single family homes. Two, the request for the conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Three, public services are provided to the area, staff do not anticipate an increase in public utilities or services due to the proposed accessory dwelling. Four, subject site is currently zoned A one agricultural district, which permits an accessory dwelling by conditional use. Five, the property is developed with a single family residence and does not vacant. Six, staff does not see an issue with A one agricultural district within the accessory dwelling on the property. Staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Eight, approval of this application does not anticipate that it has significant detrimental impacts to the public health, safety or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. Nine, no input positive or negative has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Come down here, this is the property at ninety seven thirty seven north hydraulic. The arrow here is pointing to where the shed, I'm, I'm sorry, not shed, uh, the accessory dwelling, um, was at one point and is desired to go again. Zoning map showing A one surrounding ninety seven thirty seven north hydraulic. Uh, future development plan map showing the area is good for housing. This is the site plan, I'm going to scroll down to a page that's a little bit bigger and easier on the eyes. This darker square here is where the accessory dwelling, um, is requested to, to go. The main residence is down here. This is the proposed manufactured home. It's going to be at least ten feet away from this detached garage. The existing house is here, it is about three thousand square feet. The proposed manufactured home is going to be about fifteen hundred square feet, so fifty percent of the primary residence. Site photos, we have a lot of trees and agricultural. Looking west, east of the subject property, south and north of the subject property.
Does the council have any questions for the zoning administrator? Seeing none, Auntie Dustin.
Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information for the council's consideration? Um, does the council have any questions for the applicant who's no, not here? Okay, um, we'll proceed. Final public input, does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that has not been made available during the official public hearing? Seeing none, um, move on. Um, my recommendation is going through the, um, zoning, um, so that we can agree or disagree like we normally do. So I'll read off each header. The zoning is in character of the neighborhood, agree or disagree?
Agree.
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 Consistency with a, uh, comprehensive plan vision in character of the city of Kichai. Agree. Adequacy of public utilities, roadways and other public service relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use.
Agree.
Suitability of the subject property for the use to which it has been restricted. Agree. Link the time property has remained vacant as zoned.
Agree.
Agree. You all look at me like I'm crazy. Uh, compatibility of the proposed district classification with nearby property. Agree. Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property.
Agree.
Agree. Proportionality of loss slash impact to individual property owners in the immediate vicinity relative to the net public gain of the community at large.
Agree. Agree.
Public input.
Agree.
Agree. Okay. Assuming all necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the planning commission's recommendation of approval, override the planning commission's recommendation of approval with a two third majority vote of the governing body membership, which is four votes. Return the case to the planning commission for further consideration along with statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does council have any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve CU-2024-07 and ordinance 1843-25.
I'll say a minute.
I have a motion. I have a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation that has been made by council member Hedstrom and seconded by council member Dwyer. Is there any final discussion? Seeing none? I would entertain a sorry. All in favor say aye. Carries five oh. Case number CU-2024-07 is approved. The approval has will become effective on the date ordinance number 1843-25 is published in the Ark Valley News. I call Agenda Item 8C, a consideration of case number CU-2024-08, a request to allow an oversized detached garage on the property in C1 Arts and Business District zoning district. Before we proceed, would any member of the city council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest, bias, or any other reason? Let the record show that there are no abstentions and that a quorum of five council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of 20% or more of the property being rezoned, or 20% or more of the property within the official notification area. Has the city clerk determined a valid protest in this case? The planning commission has held the public hearing for this case on 114-2024. Has the council received a summary of the public hearing found in the unapproved meeting minutes?
Yes.
Does the council and everyone present on the case believe that the public hearing was fair and impartial?
Yes.
Yes.
I will now call now call on the zoning administrator Dustin Belton to present the case report, background information, and planning commission's recommendation. Dustin.
CU 2024-08, Larry Burke. The applicant is requesting a CU to construct a detached garage that exceeds maximum gross floor area, which is 960 square feet for properties over 10,000 square feet, but not more than three acres. The property is generally located 160 feet north of Kichai Road on the east side of Oliver or 6222 North Oliver in a zoned C1 Arts and Business district. The property is not platted and adjacent to the applicant's lot that is developed with a single-family residence. The applicant lives at 134 North Oliver and plans on the garage being at 6222 North Oliver, which is directly south and adjacent. Both properties are zoned to C1 Arts and Business district. See above picture and aerial photo for more details. This is where the applicant lives. This is the adjacent property with nothing on it. Proposed garage is going to go here. Detached residential carports or garages is defined in the Kichai zoning regs as a structure considered either a carport or garage as defined in Section 3.03 that is unattached to a principal residential structure. 3.3 defines a garage as a covered and enclosed accessory structure that provides direct access to a driveway or parking space, which is intended solely for storage of motor vehicles owned by residents of the primary structure. A garage may be attached to or detached from a primary residential structure. The applicant is planning on the garage to be about 30 by 40 feet or 1,200 square feet, which is 240 square feet over the maximum permitted by Section 10.31 of the zoning regs. Kichai zoning regs state, except as approved by conditional use, maximum gross floor area shall be as follows. Lots over 10,000 square feet in area but not more than three acres. Garages 960 square feet. Approval of this request would allow the applicant to construct the garages proposed. Zoning lot is defined in the Kichai zoning regulations as a contiguous area of property on one or more lots of record having the same owner, the entire area of which is within the same zoning district, where a single lot of record has portions within different zoning districts. Each portion within a different zoning district is considered an individual zoning lot. Subject property was developed in 1920. In 2024, the applicant demolished the buildings that were on the property. There have been no zoning actions on this property. Oliver Street is a paved local road and all public services are available and provided to the property. Requested conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan. Recommendation: Planning staff recommends that the request be approved, subject to the following conditions. The applicant and/or contractor shall submit a building permit and provide engineering design plans. The detached residential garage must comply with specific use standards of Section 10.31. The driveway of the detached residential garage shall be graded for appropriate drainage and surface with asphalt, concrete, comparable hard pavement, or constructed and maintained that is the period there. I took that out last time. I apologize. Four, the oversized detached garage shall be maintained under the same ownership as the principal structure located at 134 North Oliver Street. A deed restriction stating such shall be filed with the Sedgwick County Register of Deeds. Five, if the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the ZA, in addition to enforcing other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the CU is null and void. This recommendation is based upon the following findings. One, the properties to the northeast, south, and west are zoned as C1 Arts and Business district and developed with commercial businesses. Two, the request for a conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan. Three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff does not anticipate an increase in utilities or services due to the proposed garage. Four, subject site is currently zoned C1 Arts and Business, which permits a detached garage that exceeds the maximum gross floor area by conditional use approval. The properties are approximately 29,401 square feet and have a maximum gross excuse me, maximum lot coverage of 100% minus applicable yard and off-street parking requirements. 22,875 square feet. The primary residence and proposed garage will have an approximate combined lot coverage of 11.33%. Five, the property is not vacant. It was developed with a single-family residence in 1910. Six, staff does not see an issue with C1 residential use with an oversized garage being adjacent to other C1 Arts and Business district commercial use. Seven, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts. Eight, approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts public health, safety, or welfare. Nine, no input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of staff report. We come down here. We see the old house and the old garage that was there showing that the surrounding properties are C1. Showing the area that it is Arts and Business, good for homes and/or commercial. This is a site plan for the property. North is over here on the right side of your screen. Let me make it bigger here. Two open garages excuse me, two doors on the garage. Windows are yet to be determined where the applicant would like to put them. Site photos showing the applicant's house, the old house that was demolished. Again, facing the east, showing the house and the garage, which are no longer there. Subject property south and west of the subject property.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for the zoning administrator? Does the applicant wish to present any new information for the council's consideration?
I might have a question.
Okay. Where? Sure.
It would be nice if you would put a microphone up here.
There is a microphone.
Because it's not getting much noise. That gentleman was here earlier. I couldn't understand him because I'm here. If this is approved, I would like to my knowledge from back when I was on the city council years ago in the planning commission was there is a when you file for a building permit, you have X amount of time to put that building permit in order. Now, my question is, how long is that?
180 days.
180 days?
Yes.
Next question.
That is also amended though, but go on.
amended, okay. It might reflect on what I'm getting to. Where road construction on Oliver moves north of 61st Street. I do not want to have to deal with construction at the same time I'm trying to build a garage. That's, you know, that was my question about the the timeframe for pulling a permit because I don't want it to be overlapped if they're building the road and we end up in big conflict.
So, I guess my
Can I answer that question?
Yes. I was going to say.
So, Larry, we just received a timeline for the completion of the project yesterday.
2025, 2076, 2028.
Engineering. But if you want to come up next week, we can be, we can go over that and we can help you plan when would be a good time to start your construction.
Well, that should be something that I'd like to maybe bring my contractor in on because he's got other
Sure.
irons in the fire also.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. We can work that out.
And, did you have a little bit of a question on item number four in the plan about having to sign off on a restriction, a deed restriction? What's that?
Oversized detached shall be maintained under the same ownership as the principal structure?
Yes.
And a deed restriction?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you mind explaining that to me?
That is, that is just a record document that prevents you or any other subsequent owner of that property from trying to separate the two structures by ownership, like do a lot split and sell half of it somebody else.
The question is those are two separate lots.
Right. So, this would prevent someone from selling the one lot without, without the other. So that you don't have a lot with just a garage on it with separate ownership.
Okay. Well, I understand where you're, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm also I'm getting along in here years, you know, as it all are. But I don't want to put a burden on my family, my kids, you know, fighting over this house. It's like, well, we'd get more money if we split it out, you know? But now you're locking me in where I can't split it.
Well, it's going to be a policy decision for the council whether they whether they want to
I mean, if somebody wants to turn that garage into a commercial establishment, that's from dead and gone.
So with that, because it's a condition that went through the planning commission, it would have to be an override, correct?
It would be an override, correct.
Or it would have to be sent back to the planning commission?
For more information.
For more information, but it wouldn't be able to be changed, correct? Or could it be changed at planning commission and then?
The planning commission could reconsider it, send it back without that condition, or you could just decide to override today if you wanted to.
Just making sure. Clear on what could happen. Okay.
But if you did, like I said, if you don't, if you don't have that condition, then you have the possibility of having a lot that has a garage on it.
Okay.
Was an accessory building and doesn't have its own primary purpose. That's the risk you take.
Okay. Understood.
You know, like I said, my main issue was the timeframe involved.
Yeah, we can get that worked out. Yeah, we'll get that worked out.
So with, so I guess my question for that part would be, so it's 180 days. You're saying it's amended. Dustin, you're talking?
It's, there's a caveat to it. The 180 days, as long as there's an inspection done of some sort or progress towards the completion of that garage within that 180 days. As soon as that inspection is passed, that 180 days resets.
Okay.
So, I've had somebody approach before in the past wanting to put a detached garage oversized on their property. They applied for it two years ago. They haven't made any progress on it. They have to go through that process again.
Okay.
Okay? But as long as some type of progress is being made, that time resets.
Okay.
That resets to an additional 180 days, but how long does that go on? How long does that reset go on?
As long as you have an inspection done.
As long as you're not making the bricks and mortar yourself, I think you're
Strong mud.
But there's nothing we could do today, like up here, that would give him a certain amount of time. Like, past 180 days, so he wouldn't have to make progress in 180 days. I'm just making sure that I'm talking through.
Separate.
I, that's what I'm, I'm double checking.
Permit is separate from this.
Yes.
This doesn't start the time of this.
I'm just throwing it out there so that we've talked about it.
Yeah, the clock starts when he pulls the permit.
Totally understand.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Is force majeure entered in that? Acts of God, like frozen ground where contractor can't get in to dig?
Well, it probably could. I don't, I don't know.
This, yeah. The staff will have discretion or issue.
Okay.
Work.
I just wanted to double check. Okay. Now, does council have any questions for the applicant? All right. Seeing none? Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that was not made available during the official public hearing? Seeing none? We will go through all of them again and everybody can look at me like I'm stupid. The zoning use in character of the neighborhood.
Agreed.
Agreed. Consistency with the comprehensive plan, vision, and character of the city of Kichai. Adequacy of public utility, roadways, and other public service relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use. The suitability of the subject property for the use to which it has been restricted. Length of time a property has remained vacant as zoned. Compatibility of the proposed district classification with nearby properties. Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. Proportionality of loss/impact to individual property owners in the immediate vicinity relative to the net public gain for the community at large. Public input. Assuming all necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the planning commission's recommendation of approval. Override the planning commission's recommendation of approval with a two-thirds majority vote of the governing body of membership, which is four votes. Return the case to the planning commission for further consideration along with a statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does the council have any further questions or discussion?
No.
I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve CU-2024-08 per the planning commission recommendation and approve ordinance 1844-25.
I have a second. I have a motion of approval. A recommendation has been made by council member Hedstrom and seconded by council member Baldridge. Is there any final discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five oh. Case number CU-2024-08 is approved. The approval will become effective on the date ordinance number 1844-24 is published in the Ark Valley News. I call item 8D, a consideration of case number CU-2024-09, a request to allow an oversized storage shed or structure on the property in R1 Single Family Residential District. Before we proceed, would any member of the city council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest, bias, or any other reason?
No.
Seeing none? Let the record show that there is no abstention and a quorum of five council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of 20% or more of the property being rezoned, or 20% or more of the property within the official notification area. Has the city clerk determined a valid protest in this case? The planning commission held the public hearing for this case on 114-2024. Has the, oh, should I say 2025? Dustin? Should I say?
Sorry. Read it again.
Sorry, read it again.
The planning commission held the public hearing for this case on one fourteen twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay, so that will need amended. Twenty-five, has the council received a summary of the public hearing found in the unapproved meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Does the council and everyone present on the case believe the public hearing was fair and impartial?
Yes.
Yes.
I will now call on zoning administrator Dustin Belton to present the case report, background information, and the planning commission's recommendation. Hello again.
Hello, we're halfway there, thank you.
Halfway?
Halfway. Uh, CU twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, George Martinez. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to build in addition to an already existing storage shed or structure that exceeds maximum gross floor area. Seven hundred twenty square feet for properties over ten thousand square feet, but not more than three acres. The property is generally located west of K-two fifty-four on the north side of Fifty-third Street North or forty-two ten East Fifty-third's, uh, I think Circle North. It is Zoned R-one Single Family Residential District, the property is not platted and developed with a single-family residence. Storage shed or structure is defined in the regs as a permanent or temporary structure used for general storage of personal items, including vehicle storage, which is, when required access surfacing is provided to the right-of-way. The applicant's current storage shed or structure is currently fifty by sixty, or three thousand square feet. The addition would add another fifteen hundred square feet, thirty by fifty, for a total of forty-five hundred square feet. The current lot coverage between current structures, home, carport, storage shed, or structure is approximately six thousand five hundred square feet, or six point five percent of the maximum lot coverage. Adding another fifteen hundred square feet to the existing storage shed or structure would increase this to approximately eight percent. R-one Single Family Residential District, uh, lots and uses have a maximum lot coverage of thirty-five percent. Section ten forty-five of the zoning regs state, except as approved by conditional use, maximum gross floor area shall be, or as follows, lots over ten thousand square feet in the area, but not more than three acres, seven hundred twenty square feet total, between no more than three structures. Approval of this request would allow the applicant to construct the storage shed or structure addition, making the storage shed or structure compliant with current zoning regulations as opposed to legal non-conforming. The subject site is not platted, and there have been no zoning actions on this property. Fifty-third Street North is a paved local road and all public services are available and provided to the property. The request of conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Recommendation, based upon the information available prior to public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved. Number one, the storage shed or structure must comply with specific use standards of section ten forty-five. Development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. Three, no hazardous waste or materials shall be stored in excess of regular household use in the storage shed or structure. If the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the ZA, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the CU is null and void. This recommendation is based upon the following findings. One, properties to the north and west are zoned as agricultural and developed with R-one Single Family Residential District and Agricultural District. Properties to the east and south are state-owned K-two fifty-four. Further east, property is zoned and developed for agricultural. Two, the request for a conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not anticipate an increase in public utilities or services due to the proposed garage. Four, the subject site is currently Zoned R-one Single Family Residential District, which permits a storage shed or structure that exceeds maximum gross floor area by conditional use approval. Uh, the property is approximately ninety-nine thousand three hundred twenty-four square feet and has a maximum gross lot coverage of thirty-five percent, see above. The property is not vacant, it was developed with a single-family residence in nineteen fifty-one. Six, staff does not see an issue with R-one with an oversized garage, excuse me, storage shed or structure being adjacent to A-one. Seven, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on surrounding problems. Eight, approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to public health, safety, or welfare. Nine, no input, positive or negative, has been received from the public with time staff report. Here we have an aerial view, the nice-shaped property here. The zoning map showing the property here, surrounded by agricultural and K-two fifty-four. Future development plan map showing the area here as good for rule, which can include single-family residences. Site plan of the building, this is the, uh, current shed, storage area. The applicant wants to increase it out to here, kind of highlighted in yellow, as indicated on this map here. The house is over here, carport. There's at least eighteen feet between the two structures here. Site photos. Gate to the applicant's property. Here's a nice view of K-two fifty-four. Some more K-two fifty-four and agricultural, and to the west, um, agricultural and, uh, single-family residential property over here.
All right, does the council have any questions for the zoning administrator?
No.
No.
Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, does the applicant wish to present any new information for the council's consideration?
I think Dustin's covered it all, so.
Okay. Does the council have any questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, seeing none, thank you very much, thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that it was not made available during the official public hearing? Seeing none, um, we'll go through all of the recommendations again. The zoning use and character of the neighborhood.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Consistency with the comprehensive vision and character of the city of Kichai.
Agreed.
Adequacy of the public utilities, roadways, and other public service relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use.
Agreed.
Suitability of the subject property for the use of which it's being restricted.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Length of time property has remained vacant but as zoned.
Agreed.
Compatibility of the proposed district classification with nearby properties.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Proportionality of loss impact to the individual property owner in the immediate vicinity relative to the net public gain for the community at large.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Public input.
Agreed.
Thank goodness. All right, assuming all necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the planning commission's recommendation of approval. Override the planning commission's recommendation of approval with a two-third, two-third majority vote of the governing party membership, which is four votes. Return the case to the planning commission for further consideration along with a statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does council have any further questions or discussion?
No.
I would entertain a motion.
I move we adopt CU dash twenty twenty-four dash zero nine with the amendment of the public hearing date to one fourteen twenty-five and approve ordinance eighteen forty-five dash twenty-five.
Emma, oh, sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation and has been made by council member Hedstrom and seconded by council member Brewer. Is there any final discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Carries five oh. Now, case number CU dash twenty twenty-four dash zero nine is approved, and approval will become effective on the date ordinance number eighteen forty-five dash twenty-five is published in the Ark Valley News. I don't have a script for the next one, so I hope this one doesn't actually happen.
I need a script for this.
Thank goodness. Item eight E S D twenty twenty-four dash zero one, final plat.
Okay, thank you. And before I begin on this one, I do want to say I'm going to go back through our previous cases for conditional uses for the past couple of years and see how many of them are related to oversized garages, shops, things of that nature. I, I believe we might need to amend the regulations, since everything is getting passed, no one has denied that I know of an oversized garage or shed. Something to think about, I will email you, uh, pages of the regulations. Email me back and Matt, so that way we know what's, uh, what you're thinking on, what your thoughts are, just kind of a heads up, it's something that I want to work on. All right, uh, S D twenty twenty-four dash zero one, Erin Beffert. Is wanting to plat his property at two forty-five North Oliver Street. The checklist here is, uh, plat on proper materials, not over twenty-four by thirty-six is not applicable. We've got the digital, I do have a paper copy in my office, though. Preliminary plat conditions have been met. Is the land, uh, property zoned for the intended use? Yes. Content on the plat? Yes. I've had a P E C look over the plat, give feedback, and it has been amended. Uh, location elevation, angulas, uh, lot line dimensions, side lot lines, all right angles. Consecutive lot numbers does not apply because it's just one residential lot. Widths of new street right-of-ways, um, marginal lines encircling the sheet, certificates is below, land surveyor, uh, not applicable on B or C. Uh, D, there is a notary's certificates, planning commission certificate, uh, no city attorney because it's not, uh, with an annexation. Uh, governing body certificate, transfer record, register of deeds certificate. Uh, title report, yes, not applicable on, uh, the final drainage plan. Uh, restrictive covenants, not applicable. Final plat for small tract, not applicable, vicinity, all that stuff there. Type of improvements, not applicable. Everything was already established there, so there's no real improvements going on. Based upon information prior, uh, to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the dedications for one step final plat, S D twenty twenty-four dash zero one, for Fish Odor Estates be accepted. This is the lot right here, two forty-five North Oliver, where Fish Odor Estates will be going. C one, across the street is the old venue that I think we've discussed in the past before. Future development plan map, I always get that one wrong, showing it, uh, good for housing. That is really bad quality right there. But, we do see setback lines here on the, on the right side or the east side of the property. Which means that the house cannot be built past here, this is right-of-way dedications and utilities. I mean, it's a plat.
Yeah, there's not much else to it.
That's right.
The, the, the process, unlike the lengthier zoning processes, the plats go through the planning commission and the city's engineers to check all the technical requirements and the planning commission actually approves a plat and then when it gets to the city council level. Because there are, as Dustin mentioned, um, utility and right-of-way usings and, and, uh, setback lines and everything, the council's, uh, the council's job is to accept those dedications on behalf of the city if you don't have any issues or concerns about plat.
All right, any questions, council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the dedications on the final plat for S D dash two zero two four dash zero one.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Matt, second by Karen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five oh. All right, thank you very much. All right, item eight F, park board appointments. So, council, um, as you were made aware in your packet, there is two resignations from the park board. Um, Elizabeth Bassford and Ursula Drake were unable to continue, um, on the park board, and so they asked that we accept their resignations and, uh, fill their spots. Um, I did have two members reach out who did want to take this spot, and what I'm recommending, that we, um, accept the resignation from Liz and Ursula and, um, I would like to nominate Cheryl Hobson and Kristen Schwab to the planning, uh, to the park board, sorry. If council has any questions, we have, uh, the park board candidate qualifications. Um, I can read them out, but I've kind of been reading a lot tonight, so please don't make me. But, um, both were, uh, very excited to join the, um, join the park board, uh, they both have long histories with Kichai and are very great advocates for the city, so. All right, I would entertain a motion, do we need to do it in separate or can we make it all in one, to accept the resignations and appoint?
Uh, accept the resignations first and then make the appointments.
All right, I would entertain a motion for, uh, to accept the resignations.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations from the park board of Liz Bassford and Ursula Drake.
Second, I have a motion by Matt, second by Karen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five oh. Um, and then I would entertain a motion for the appointments of the two, uh, members of Cheryl Hobson and Kristen Schwab.
I move that we, uh, appoint the two, uh, candidates for park board, Cheryl Hobson and Kristen Schwab.
I'll second.
Who wants it? Paul was lucky. I have a motion by Karen, second by Paul, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five oh. Move on to old business, we have new old business. Um, move on to council reports, does any council member have a report?
I, I will give a very brief one, but it will be in the packet, um, for approval next time, so if people want to read it. Um, one thing I did want to highlight was I did attend the South Central Delegation Regional Forum at the Workforce Alliance, eight of the delegation members did attend. This was an open forum for the public to come and talk to the delegation, um, about anything that they had, they, it was an open forum, you could sign up and, um, they would address your concerns. It went longer than two hours, uh, which was originally scheduled, uh, and, um, uh, five elected officials from different cities did attend as well. Um, this was, uh, co-sponsored and meant by REAP, so. Uh, very, very well attended by, uh, uh, members of the community and definitely was good back-and-forth dialogue. Um, another, uh, thing I'll highlight is today we had a REAP, uh, quarterly meeting and we discussed our twenty-eight, twenty-six work plan and, um, where we're moving in the future for REAP, and then we also had a presentation by EverGee, so. Things I'll talk about, we did newsletter, discussion of Facebook posts, different Ark Valley News, uh, topics, uh, different, um, uh, intersection project updates, county updates. Um, and two announcements I want to make, um, our third Turtle Talk newsletter is out and live, both on Facebook and on the webpage, so go check it out. And, um, just a heads up, East, the Easter Scrambler, um, handled by the Kichai Fair, is on April fifth at two PM at Kichai City Park. And that's it. Any other council reports, if not, I'm moving on.
Okay.
Staff reports, we do the second part of the month, so I'm moving on unless Matt has anything we'd like to talk about.
No.
Okay.
Stay warm.
And, oh, I guess we can say, the intersection project, the schedule's up on Facebook and on our website, um, go check it out.
Yeah, we received an official timeline from a P E C R engineer that was provided by the contractor, and we have posted that on both Facebook and our webpage for people to look at.
Thank you very much. All right, executive session.
Hey, Madam Mayor, I move we go into executive session, the subject to be discussed during the executive session is non-elected personnel. The justification for closing the meeting is discussion related to non-elected personnel matters, and the time and place is when the open meeting shall resume is eight fifty PM in the city council chamber.
All right, go ahead or second.
Second.
I have a motion by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Carrie's five oh.
How you doing?
Yeah, 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 hanging on.